I'd like a time to take a moment to call this meeting to order. And I'd like you to join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Amen. Terry, will you call the roll?
Archana Olliar?
Here.
Eric Coran?
Here.
Kyle Wiederman?
Here.
Mr. Ramon?
Here.
John Maston?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need any type of executive session? Does anybody know? I think we're good without it. Call to the public. I have one here for call to the public. Steve? If you'll come up and take the, uh...
Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Steve Senke. I'm Vice President of Lake Havasu Regional Orchestra, as well as a board member of the Lake Havasu Symphonic Winds. I'm here tonight because we've had such a strange year. And last year, we were not able to hold any of our usual rehearsals at the Lake Havasu High School, nor were we able to hold any concerts at the PAC. And I'm hoping we can kind of get back on schedule this year. I haven't heard any talk really about seating capacity or anything like that with the PAC. We just want to make sure we're good to go, maybe this fall, with our usual rehearsals in the high school band room and concert schedule dates in the PAC. We've been meeting, the Symphonic Winds has been meeting over 20 years in the high school band room, and the orchestra over 40 years. We've had a real nice, close relationship with the school. I had a lot of the past music teachers conduct both groups. I've been in the Symphonic Winds over 20 years and in the orchestra over 40 years. So we're all itching to get back and play some music. And we just want to know if there's, I'm here, by the way, representing both, both groups here tonight. So we just want to know if there's any issues that you know of getting back on schedule and picking up where we kind of left off a year and a half ago? Are we allowed to rapport back and forth here, or?
So I can't speak for the board, but we are prepared to open up our facilities again to the public. We are in the process of revising the facilities use manual so that it's, I think, a little bit more easy to follow. Not that it completely applies to your group and organization, but we are in the process of getting things opened back up pre-COVID.
Okay. Also, the contact person I was given, the last contact person I was given was a Barbara Green. However, I've talked with her, and she told me she will not be in that capacity starting in the fall. Is there a new contact person we can contact to get these scheduled rehearsals and concert dates appointed with?
That's correct. So if you would just contact the business office?
Okay.
We will process the request from there.
And that business office is here in the admin building?
Correct. It's right here.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
You bet.
Next up is our LHCEA person. Carol, come on down.
We've got to hurry to report. We're just waiting on the budget, so I'm just here to be a part of the, to listen to our board meetings. But as far as right now, there's, we're just kind of sitting and waiting.
All right. Hearing none, other calls to the public?
No.
Okay, we're ready for item number four, which is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion on that?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote, please.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. And there's nothing in five at all. That's good. We don't have any leftover business from the last couple months. That gets me to number six, where we're going to start with, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended the governing board approve a renewal of the contract with Tahoe Food Service for the fiscal year '22. In 2019, the district approved a five-year contract with Tahoe with four annual renewals. This contract can be mutually canceled or renewed by the parties. And if this action item is approved, it would be the second renewal of the contract. The renewal documents have been submitted to the Arizona Department of Education and have been approved. A copy is attached for the board's review. And a Tahoe representative is here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Do we have any questions?
I do have one question. So the USDA has extended for the next school year its free lunch program to all students. And so I know I've asked this question in the past, but does that impact, um, does that impact food provision from your point of view?
Well, we are still waiting for, very much like Mr. Murray, clarification. And the wheels are in motion at USDA, and then the state will have to adopt what waivers it chooses to adopt. We, um, my push and the push of Tahoe, and I think the push of the district, is it would be unconscionable for us to not receive any free meal subsidies we can while they're provided by USDA. So we expect that to continue for the next school year. There is a change of program at the end of September. For the pandemic, until the end of this coming September, we've been running on what's called a simplified summer program, which is relaxing of some of the component requirements and some other waivers that allow us to buy what's available instead of a more strict set of nutrition requirements in the National School Lunch Program. I believe those waivers will all lapse at the end of September and will be on a National School Lunch Program set of requirements with still a summer program reimbursement. So, um, fiscally, I think it's a benefit for the district. The summer reimbursement is slightly higher. It may be challenging with supply chain issues that we continue to have. The supply chain is, is in a wreck. And we may have issues also with staffing. We've had issues with summer staffing already. There are lots of people looking for the same types of, essentially, we're hiring part-time minimum wage for most of our positions. So, um, those are two challenges. I think the food provision will be resolved in enough time, and I think that we will continue. And we've, I should back up and say, we have tried to remain true to National School Lunch Program nutrition, even though we've accepted the waivers that allow us to have them more simplified just because we don't want to confuse the kids about what meals look like, kids and adults. So we've had some waivers that allow us to, the best one, the best example is there's a waiver in place right now about colors of vegetables. In National School Lunch Program, every day I have to make sure I'm giving enough of the different color types of vegetables. So there's dark greens, there's red-orange, there's beans and peas, there's starches. With this waiver, I don't have to calculate that. We're still trying to, but some things, like bag lunches, don't do so well with wilty salads or things like that. So it's carrot sticks or that sort of thing. But the quantity of vegetable and fruit every day is still the standard of National School Lunch. I don't know if that helped or...
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I didn't, I didn't have any other questions.
How many students participated in the summer lunch program?
Uh, we're, I don't know how many students, I don't think I can answer that, but we serve right now around 900 meals a day. We've been serving, now that is with the extended summer learning program, which has boosted our numbers, but it's also with a very small Parks and Recs program. So I think it's about balanced with normal year.
There's any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move that we accept item 6.1 as presented.
I second.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
John Maston?
Absolutely yes. Okay, 6.2, Mrs. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended that the board approve the first presentation of revised policy IKFB Graduation Exercises per Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory for April 2021. House Bill 2705, an act relating to local governance of schools, was approved by the governor and filed in the Office of the Secretary of State on April 20, 2021 as an emergency measure that is necessary to preserve the public peace, health, or safety and is operative immediately as provided by law. House Bill 2705 is replicated below and being enacted by the legislature of the state of Arizona. Section 1, Title 15, Chapter 3, Article 3, Arizona Revised Statutes, is amended by adding Section 15-348 to read, "Dress code policies, traditional tribal regalia, objects of cultural significance, graduation ceremonies, and definitions." A school district governing board, a charter school governing body, or any public school may not prohibit a student who is a member of a federally recognized Indian tribe or who is eligible to be enrolled as a member of a federally recognized Indian tribe from wearing traditional tribal regalia or objects of cultural significance at a graduation ceremony. For the purposes of this section, objects of cultural significance and traditional tribal regalia include an eagle feather or eagle plume. And in our policy, that will be Section E and F.
Questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 6.2 as presented.
I'll second.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Mrs. Walter, 6.3.
Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the following memorandums of understanding from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2023, between Hospice of Havasu and Lake Havasu Unified School District and Lake Havasu Unified School District and Lake Havasu High School. Hospice of Havasu provides lessons to 3rd and 5th grade students focused on positive self-esteem, identification of emotions, and appropriate coping skills, which will support the toolbox curriculum used by our school counselors. In addition, they provide a grief support group life after loss with parent permission to Thunderbolt and Lake Havasu High School students who have experienced a loss. All services are provided at no cost to the district. A copy of this understanding has been approved by legal.
Questions or a motion?
No question, just a little bit of a comment. This is the type of thing that, you know, Havasu, working together with the community, this is an awesome program, and it's free of charge and really helps our students. So I just wanted to commend that. And I'll make a motion. I move, we do, that we approve 6.3 as presented.
And I'll second that. Just as somebody who works in the funeral business and sees death every day, I think it's an awesome thing to help with grief counseling. And the fact that they do it free of charge is something that's really awesome.
I'll call for the question.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Next one, yours too, Mrs. Walter.
Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding for Wake HOG Head Start preschool classroom facilities usage at Oro Grande Classical Academy and Havasu High Elementary Schools for the period of August 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026. The district has identified the need and value of providing quality preschool assistance for at-risk children, particularly those from low-income families within our community. This agreement is being revised at this time to include the relocation of the current Head Start classroom from Nautilus Elementary School to Havasu High Elementary School, which will have two classrooms moving forward. This agreement increases access for eligible low-income families to quality preschool intervention at Havasu High Elementary School and Oro Grande Classical Academy, in addition to the Pima Head Start site. Approval of the renewal of the memorandum of understanding will serve for a period of five years with the option of termination with three months' written notification. A copy of this agreement has been reviewed by legal and is attached in the board's review.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion or a question.
I move to approve 6.4 as presented.
I second.
For moving the Head Start from Nautilus to Havasu High, that is a space consideration. Is that correct?
Yes. What we have seen in recent years, the numbers and the growth at the north and the town, Nautilus was being impacted. Havasu High did have the ability to grow the programs and looking at facilities. So we had one classroom this year, and then we had a classroom at Havasu High, and we're moving the one from Nautilus, so there'll be two. So we're continuing to support the same number of kids. It's just being able to ensure that Nautilus has a facility to meet the needs of its population as well.
And then is there a plan to identify the students who would utilize this program and make sure that they know of the location change?
Yes. Head Start is actually responsible for the program. However, all of our schools provide information to parents that may be in need, and that information was communicated. What Head Start did do is they have a three-year-old and a four-year-old class. So last year, what they did is we transitioned the four-year-old class to Havasu High. And so the three-year-old class finished at Nautilus, and so they're starting a new three-year-old class.
I don't have any other questions.
Having had a daughter that partook in Head Start, this is a great idea.
It is a great program, and it's nice that we can offer it in our community. And it's located centrally throughout the families that may have transportation issues, can still benefit.
I'll entertain a motion.
I made one, and there was a second.
Yeah, we're good to go.
Okay, then we'll go to vote.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Looks like you got another one.
Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding for Wake HOG Head Start collaborative readiness activities for the period of August 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. We did have an agreement in, just so that everybody understands, for last year. They just, those are the dates that they gave in the agreement. The rationale is that the improving, the Head Start for School Readiness Act of 2007 requires Head Start programs to collaborate with local education agencies to ensure the orderly and smooth transition of children from Head Start into appropriate kindergarten programs in the local community. Approval of the renewal of the memorandum of understanding outlines expectations and guidance that will enable the district and Wake HOG Head Start to continue to work collaboratively to better support students attending Head Start transition into kindergarten. This agreement has been reviewed by legal. Just so everybody understands, these IGAs are actually, start at the state level, and then districts are supposed to address it within their local community and meet and address those implementations.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion or a question.
I move to approve item 6.5.
I'll second.
Is that item 6.6?
No, I...
6.5.
No, I slipped it.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. I'll second.
Sorry.
Kyle, are you good?
Oh.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. And then lastly, Mrs. Walter, 6.6 is, where'd she go? Oh, she's right there where we left her.
Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the renewal of the memorandum of agreement with Wake HOG Head Start for the provision of preschool special education services for the period of August 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, 2004, and Head Start reauthorization 2007 require that the Head Start programs collaborate with local education agencies to ensure the early identification of preschool students with disabilities and the provision of services in the least restrictive environment. Approval of the renewal of the memorandum of agreement outlines expectations and guidance that will enable the district and Wake HOG to continue to work collaboratively to better identify at-risk students and provide support and services in the least restrictive environment in a cost-effective manner. This agreement has been approved by legal.
I'll entertain a motion or a question on 6.7.
I'll make a motion to approve 6.6 as presented.
I second.
Any questions? How come they don't just line up with the normal fiscal year of July 1?
That was Hal Christensen.
They're looking at the school year. It's usually where they're looking. Head Start actually starts a little bit later than our school year does, kind of working through that program. Their grants, even though they are on the fiscal year, very often when you're looking at that program, it's actually about two weeks after we start our school year.
I think we have a motion on the floor, so let's go ahead and vote it.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Jamie, it's your turn.
Mr. President and governing board. It is recommended the governing board approve the agreement for Follett Destiny hosted licensing that will serve as an update for the current library software. This purchase enables a vendor-hosted solution for LHUSD's current library software for use by staff and students. The existing onsite server and operating system must be retired as it no longer meets the current security standards used to protect LHUSD staff and students. This purchase will provide all eight sites with a vendor-hosted solution for library inventories, indexing, lookup, and a secure access for students and staff. The quote for $8,574.01 in year one and $7,301.36 annually includes professional services to migrate the LHUSD database to the new structure as well as implementation, technical training, maintenance, and support. This purchase is based on the Follett Destiny Management Agreement and the pricing provided by Mahavi Educational Services Cooperative Contract 19HFOLL1003. This purchase has been reviewed and approved by the Business Department and legal. Funding sources will be M&amp;O Library and Capital Instruction.
Questions on that for a motion?
I move that we present 6.7 as presented.
I'll second.
Questions, or it's time to vote?
Is the cost for this comparable to what we've spent in years past?
Yes, and so right now, it's sitting on our servers. It's just no longer secure. And so this will now sit on the Follett servers, but it's about what we're paying.
And when you, when you talk about securing data, they're not collecting information on students. It's just inventories and...
Correct. Yes, it's just a library checkout system.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Jamie, next one, yours too.
Mr. President and governing board. It is recommending the board approve changes to the LHUSD Administrator Evaluation and Growth System. As a result of legislative changes and feedback received from administration and the superintendent, changes have been made to the administrative evaluation tool. The teacher evaluation was revamped successfully in 2009 and allowed for all staff members within LHUSD to use the language of the core propositions to discuss effective teacher practices. This tool was developed in alignment with ARS 15503 and 15341. This system was created with a philosophy that ongoing data should be gathered and used in decision-making. Administrator expectations should be rigorous, clear, and equitable from school to school. Quality feedback and systems of support are essential to improve leadership practice. The research framework provides evidence of effective leadership. Administrators must be effective instructional and organizational leaders. Principals impact student learning, and principals strengthen their practice throughout their careers. The LHUSD evaluation instrument is based on the Marzano-focused leadership model. This model was developed using the Wallace Foundation's Study of Effective Principal Practices, the Preeminent Study of Principal Leadership. The evaluation tool also streamlines forms for administrators and evaluators and lays out timelines and requirements of expectations. The tool provides opportunities for principals to set goals in the areas that are aligned with student achievement and success. A copy of the plan was emailed to the governing board prior to the meeting for their review.
Okay, questions or motions?
Just a quick comment. I wanted to just emphasize that last sentence. The tool provides opportunities for principals to set goals in areas aligned with the student achievement and success. That's what we're all about. That's what our goal should be about. So I just wanted to really emphasize that.
I'll make a motion to approve 6.6 as presented.
It's actually 6.8, but that's okay.
Yeah, 6.8.
And I'll second it for 6.8.
I think we're ready to vote.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Guess who's up again?
Mr. President and governing board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the following performance pay, or 301 plan, for the 2021-22 school year, also known as the Classroom Site Fund. Legislation pertaining to the Classroom Site Fund was changed this year with the passage of Senate Bill 1139. These changes allowed for a broader use of the funds and recognized different ways performance of teachers can be assessed. During the Budget Committee meetings, it was decided that $2,000 of the 301 funds would be paid directly to teachers in their bi-weekly pay. The LHUSD District 301 Committee met to review new legislation and the framework LHUSD had previously used. Based on those meetings, it was decided that all remaining 301 funds would be paid out to eligible teachers and certified staff members as performance pay. The performance pay criteria would be focused around four components: school-wide student achievement, school-wide professional development goal, family engagement goal, individual summative evaluation score. Each area is worth up to 25% of performance pay. Goals will be developed, approved by 70% of staff as required by legislation, reviewed by district administration, and approved by the board annually. The plan was streamlined to support more focused goal development aligned to improve student outcomes. The makeup of the board is as follows, as printed. As mandated by the state, this plan must be approved by the governing board annually. A copy of the performance pay plan was emailed to the governing board prior to this meeting for their review.
Okay, motions or questions?
I move to approve 6.9 as presented.
I second.
Any further questions?
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Wiederman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Okay, Jamie, 6.10.
Mr. President and governing board. Mr. President and governing board, it is recommended the governing board approve the contract for Frontline for the 21-22 school year at an annual cost of $62,237.99. Administration is recommending the continued use of contracted services with Frontline Education. LHUSD currently uses Frontline for online absence management, recruiting and hiring solution, evaluation management, digital forms and records retention, Frontline Central, and the online time and attendance management. Frontline's recruiting and hiring software has been instrumental in modernizing and updating the online application tool utilized by LHUSD. Administrators are easily able to post jobs to online job boards as positions are opened. Administrators are able to proactively recruit employees who fit specific certifications using K-12 JobSpot. Onboarding paperwork is sent out immediately upon hire. Previously, Excel spreadsheets were used for evaluations with hard copies printed and stored in files at both schools and the district office. Frontline evaluation management now houses all of our evaluation forms and allows for evaluators to track walkthrough data, evaluation completion rates, and performance trends among staff throughout their schools. It also allows district administration to use data based on evaluation results to make recommendations. Employee onboarding files, evaluation documents, and other personnel records are housed in Frontline Central. This system replaced Winocular, which we previously used to store our files and post jobs. Winocular's functionality was limited and was discontinued. Time and attendance is a digital time clock system. It allows us to eliminate paper time cards. The system communicates with Visions for Payroll and with our current Frontline Absence Management system. We are able to accurately track hours worked and save time on data entry. This contract was reviewed by purchasing and legal.
Questions and motions?
I move to approve 6.10 as presented.
I second.
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Mr. Murray, 6.11.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended the governing board approve the award for district standardized apparel to Natural Tees as the low-responsive responsible bidder. Standardized shirts and apparel have been required throughout the district for many years. In the past, annual and two-year quotes have been requested from vendors in order to provide standardized shirts and apparel to our students. In an attempt to provide a more efficient procurement process, the district determined that a contract of one year with four annual renewals would be most advantageous to the district. The business department released IFB 20-21-01 on May 17th to vendors on the district's bidders list by way of email notification and posting on the district's website. Vendors had until June 4th at 3:00 PM to respond. The award will begin on July 1st, 2021. A copy of the IFB 20-21-01 amendments and backup from the awarded vendor were provided to the governing board for review, and the business department and Valley School's procurement representative reviewed this item. And just as a note, we had three vendors who responded.
Questions? Motions?
Will our prices remain the same?
We're, now that you are getting ready to take action on it, there are some slight adjustments, but not anything major at all.
The t-shirts will still be the regular t-shirts?
Should be the same amount. It may even be a little lower, we're just trying to figure out what the average cost is across the board.
I move to accept 6.11 as presented.
I second.
Are we ready for our vote or do we have questions?
Keep local business local.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Murray, next one is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended the governing board approve Resolutions Number 2021-2201 through 2021-22-10. The action described in the recommendation is necessary to continue our current practices through the 21-22 fiscal year. The resolutions as submitted are maintenance resolutions. It would not affect any substantial change in our current operating procedures.
Questions, motions?
I'll make a motion to present 6.12 as presented.
I'll second.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman? Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Murray, you again.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve Resolution 2021-22-11 and sign a borrowing request to be sent to the Mojave County Treasurer. The Mojave County Treasurer has requested the governing board approve and sign a borrowing request to Wells Fargo Bank for a line of credit in the amount of $1 million. The district does not anticipate the need to borrow funds from Wells Fargo. However, this paperwork must be put in place in case it becomes necessary. Also attached is a resolution of the board authorizing the borrowing request, and this item has been reviewed by the district's legal counsel.
Questions, motions?
I move to approve item 6.13 as presented.
I second.
Just a quick question. We aren't planning on doing the million dollars, I know that. If we were borrowing, it would come before the governing board, correct?
It would. It may not come immediately because what would happen is, this is put in place just in case at that particular time when the county is actually processing our warrants or checks, that if there were not sufficient cash within our bank account or our account at the county, then they would tap into this line of credit so that our vendors and payroll, all of that can still process. I don't see that happening here unless tax revenue becomes highly delinquent, where we have people not paying their property taxes. I don't see that happening anytime soon.
Thank you.
But it would come to you after I'm aware that it's going to, I may not be able to call a special session in order to process payroll in time to make that happen. So right here, you're authorizing us to do that, but it would come to you at a later date.
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Okay, 14.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board review applications and possibly take action to appoint applicants to the Employee Benefit Trust Board of Trustees effective July 1st, 2021. ARS 15-382C specifies trustees are appointed by the governing board, and if an employee of the school district is acting as a trustee, the trust shall be administered by at least five joint trustees, of whom no more than one may be an employee of the school district. Employee Benefit Trust Board of Trustees terms are three years. Therefore, the trust membership would, if approved, be as follows, and you can see Marcia Cox would remain and her term expiration date. We currently have three vacancies. Stephanie Lueris continues on, and you can see her term expiration date as well. And then you have a couple of applicants to consider tonight and then possibly take action on appointing both, one, none, so it'll be up to you.
Questions, motions?
So if we were to not approve anyone new to this committee, they wouldn't be able to conduct any business.
Yeah, we would not have a CORM. But we can still continue to go out and extend the application deadline to see if we have additional applicants, but yes, we would not have a CORM at that point. We are in the wind-down period, just to remember, so the LHS EBT Trust is in the wind-down stage. So at this point, they're just simply kind of just receiving reports from the third-party administrator or the administrator, the EBT consultant, and just taking action on any type of accounting concerns at this particular point. But really, we're all just kind of watching things come to a close at this point.
But we do have, you said two applicants?
Correct, yeah, the applications were sent to you. So just by way of information, it's Amy Barney who is currently serving on the trustees. She's also an administrator within the district, so she's an employee. She would be the employee. And it's also Julie Sassine who is also currently serving on the board. So those were just basically resumitals of their application.
I move that we present, or we accept 614 as presented.
I second.
Do we need a formal appointment in that, though, appointing the applicants by name? So that way, at least we know?
Okay, I will amend my motion to appoint Amy Barney and...
Julie Sassine.
Julie Sassine as the employee community member, and the other one as the community member, and approve 614 as presented.
And I will second the amended motion. And I would like to say thank you to the people who volunteer, the people who have served, who are continuing on in their service, and then the people who are re-upping their application. Even though it is, as Mr. Murray said, it's a wind-down phase, but it still does take volunteer time and some thought and effort, and so we appreciate their service to the community and to our district.
And just by way of mentioning, Marcia Cox contacted me today. She had a family commitment, so she would, she really would like to be here tonight, but she did have a family commitment, so she was just expressing that she'd like to be excused.
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Out comes the fun one, Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve a use-of-facilities agreement between Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One and the Havasu Heat to expire no later than December 31st, 2023. The district was approached by the Havasu Heat to discuss options to utilize the high school baseball field and identified areas outlined in the agreement in anticipation of their return to the community. Through conversations with Havasu Heat ownership and management and district personnel, the district's legal counsel drafted an agreement for both parties to review and finalize. Havasu Heat ownership and management have reviewed the agreement, have agreed to the terms, and await governing board action. The business department, LHHS administration, and district legal counsel have reviewed this item.
Questions or a motion?
I think we have somebody who would like to speak.
Would you mind coming to the microphone and saying your name? We all know who you are, but...
My name is Carrie Thompson.
There we go.
Hello, my name is Carrie Thompson, currently the softball coach at Lake Havasu High School and a parent of two sons that are students in LHUSD. My concern was signing a multi-year contract for use of our facility that doesn't limit the amount of time that can be used in what we consider the off-season, which is everything other than February to May, which is our time by the AIA. This, I just first time saw this yesterday, and part of the usage is our batting cages, and at the end of the contract in Exhibit A, it also includes the softball field facility. And it says in the contract that it's per day, so if they contracted the day, the high school would not have access to our facility, as I read the agreement, and said that they would be providing a schedule in August, which I think would be appropriate at that time to meet with other community organizations that would like field use activity. I currently have a couple within the softball program that are interested, and also the high school teams as I run off-season training. So currently, we're using the field for softball three days per week in the summer, and with the LHUSD heat restriction requirements, we're pretty limited as to when we can go to the field to use our facility. So my assumption is that would be the exact same time that the Havasu Heat would like to use the facility also. So I'm just asking that there be a procedure that we all sit down and kind of look at field facility usage and see that LHUSD students still have access to our facility that we use to help field our teams and develop youth in the city. And I just wanted to mention that the lower facility was such a need for this community, just community-wide. There is a true shortage of softball and baseball fields for our youth, and especially baseball. There is very few facilities at which our youth 18 and under can play baseball in Lake Havasu. And I think giving an outside organization that doesn't include our LHUSD students first access and unlimited amount of time before we have a chance to schedule that out is a little unnerving to me, and since I only heard of this yesterday, I'm just asking to kind of see if this could be tabled and we talk about the people that really use the facility and sit down and be able to work out a workable agreement. I believe community use is important. I was a huge supporter of the bond. I played on the first softball team here in Lake Havasu and was proud to open the very first field and proud to be able to open a truly state-of-the-art facility that we painstakingly take care of to the till. And I just want to be insured and know that outside entities would really be taking care of this, and there would be district personnel in charge of really overseeing that to make sure that that happens. Currently, any outside organizations are run by staff already, so there's always district personnel there while our facility is currently being used. Really, as we kind of enter this area outside of COVID and our facilities do start opening up, I just think there needs to be a better procedure and process for how we do that and that we look at everybody equally that would like to use the facilities, whether it be staff from Lake Havasu High School, other staff from Lake Havasu Unified, or other community organizations. And I don't think we should give one organization a monopoly and only sign this contract and not even hear from who else wants to reserve time in our fields. Thank you.
My name's Norm Lyon. I'm the general manager and director of operations for the Heat organization, so I can probably answer some questions just to put everyone at ease. Currently, we would be looking to use the facility the last May, June, July would be our areas. We would work with the school district to put a schedule together. We currently play a 60-game schedule. We would look around 30, 32 home games that we would be using the facility. Here in Havasu, we would only be playing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, because a lot of our players are coming from out of town. They like to be able to enjoy the lake and the facilities as well, so we play double headers usually, typically at 5:00 and 7:10 is when we would come in and play. So we're looking at about 30 games during the summer that we would be playing. As for use of the facilities, I also have been a coach with Ms. Thompson and the baseball program for the last 10 years. We also run league ball and travel ball stuff as well. We will not be running anything on the field because our focus is the college-level guys, but we are willing to work with the school district on scheduling and all that stuff. But yes, currently, Mr. Twymon would like to have been here, but he's back in Kansas. Our last season has started back there, so he's in the middle of games right now, so... But if you have any questions... But if you have any questions for me, I'm more than willing to answer anything you guys have.
I just have one because I didn't really hear what you said. But you were talking about Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday schedule. But did you say that it was at the evening?
Yes, we typically play in the evenings. Most of the teams we play are traveling from out of town. So they like to play two games a day just for cost reasons and travel and hotel rooms, all that stuff. So we usually would play at five o'clock or five-ten around there and seven-ten. So we, our games usually last, you know, they're seven, our first game would be a seven inning game or our second game would be a nine inning game.
I do have several questions, but a lot of them will be directed towards Mr. Murray.
Okay.
But going off of what, I'm sorry, can you say your last name again?
Uh, I'm Norm Lyon.
Norm, can I call you Norm?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sorry. So going off of what he said, if, if they are playing in the evenings, but they rent the facility for the day, does that mean that that whole day is set aside for them? Or could our high school students use it during the morning?
So, so as, as mentioned by both, there will be a calendar and schedule that is developed way early on in the year. Priority will obviously, for your season, will go to the Heat when it comes to your actual scheduled games.
Yes.
But priority will always, other than that, go to the district. And we've had many conversations over the last couple of years as this has been a work in progress, multiple athletic directors at the high school. So, so, so yes, if they are going to start at five P M., then the calendar would, would basically be as such. So if you need the game at four o'clock for, or you need the facility at four o'clock for setup or you're running a practice, a specific practice at a particular time, all of that would be outlined.
Yeah, so typically we show up about two hours before the game. That gives our players an hour or so to hit in the batting cages and do that type of stuff. And then prepare for the game and then we play the game. We don't tend to have a lot of practices just because most of our guys are college players. We have our own facilities to, to throw pitching practice. And we have our own batting cages that we do on the off schedule. So the only time we truly would be using the batting cages or anything like that would be before a game. So that's kind of what we do now currently.
So just to make sure I heard you correctly, it will just be the baseball field and some of, you know, the batting cages?
Yes.
Not the softball field at all?
No, the reason that we outline the softball field just because we typically have security at our events just for, you know, keeping it. And that's kind of where the fence is, so that's kind of where they put it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and it specifies in the agreement right there at the very beginning, field and building use. It says the L H U S D Number One will allow the use of the lower field, the lower level facilities outlined in Exhibit A. And that was just to show that when we talk about concessions and restrooms, we wanted to show it's in this area. So if we were to just say concessions, then we don't want to have to address the fact that they're up in the football stadium thinking they're using that concession or in the gym where they play basketball using that concession facility. So that's why it's outlined, outlined in that exhibit showing in this particular area. But we did specifically outline or identify baseball field, batting cages, baseball viewing areas, restrooms and parking as designated by the parties and within the confines outlined in Exhibit A.
And this is also something that can be canceled with ninety days' notice, correct?
Correct.
From either party?
Yeah, and currently, just so you know, the Havasu Heat, we've been operating for twenty-nine years. We're from the community. We all live here. Our coaches are from here. You know, we have current students that just graduated that do play for us. You know, even the baseball coaches right now are all alumnis of the Havasu Heat. They've all played for us. So we're, we're not like we're operating in Kansas. We actually live here, reside here. All of our kids are going to school here. And we operate our business out of Lake Havasu City in Arizona and we travel back to Kansas currently. We had a ten-year contract back there. It expires this, this last, last year actually it expired. We went back this year to just show good faith because of everything that happened and be part of that community. And same thing, you know, we, we put in probably, we've had at least four hundred of our players that have gone on to play professional baseball and thousands that go to college. We try to always take kids from the community. Like right now, we have two kids that are currently just graduated from Lake Havasu High School that are playing for us right now back in Kansas. So we do put a lot back into the community. We're not just here to use the field and walk away. That's not what we're trying to do.
So in our, our maintenance department too will have that schedule and calendar. Our athletic field grounds person will be mindful of that calendar. And that person, if not the maintenance supervisor, will be in charge of actually going around and inspecting the facility after they're using it for that particular weekend to ensure that, that all things still look like they're intact. And anything that's out of the ordinary, they will be contacted immediately to address that.
Yeah, currently the stadium we play in back in Kansas, our players and staff, we don't leave the stadium after a game until everything is picked up, cleaned up. They do trash, they sweep the bleachers, they do everything. So it, it is left the way we show up. That's how we've always done it.
Well, we will be responsible since we do have an athletic fields ground person that's stationed there on that campus, on that facility. They will take care, he will take care of the cleaning of the restroom facilities though, just to make sure that that's sanitized appropriately.
When Ms. Thompson spoke, she talked about, or she referenced a heat index that her teams have to observe. Do you have to observe that same rule?
No, because we're college level and it's independent baseball, so we don't have that. Though if it is unbearable, you know, if it's a hundred and twenty-eight degrees or something like that, we might push back the start of a game. But that would be something we would definitely communicate with the school district if we were going to do that. We typically wouldn't push it into the morning or anything like that. We would play in the evening, so we would just play later in the evening. Most of our games are, are finished by around ten o'clock currently. You know, on a double header, that's what our goal is to be done and off the field at ten. So it gives us an hour or so to clean up and then out of the facility by, you know, a reasonable hour. We do realize there's homes in that area and we don't want to keep the lights on all night long either, so.
Question. Can this contract just be revised to include what Mr. Lyon is talking about? That the Heat will only reserve between Thursday and Sunday evenings in the months of June and July? The only issue that we have this May is AIA stake playoffs. Typically your baseball and softball teams aren't stake playoffs and that would be your practice every day. And last year we posted.
Yeah, so in the contract it says that we will not play during any AIA sanctioned events. So if they do go into the playoffs, you know, obviously we're going to have a, a buffer there to, we're not going to start the day you guys are starting playoffs. That's not what we're looking to do. We typically start, our first game will be the, the, the first of June, maybe the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, depending on what the schedule looks like. But we try to start the first of June and finish by the, the end of July. We do not want to go into August just because school starts on the first. Our goal is not to be in there, you know, with, when kids are in school or anything like that, so.
And that reminds having a little buffer time in that timeframe. But I think a wide open contract that I was presented online and in the work package does not leave any room for any other outside entities that may ultimately reserve our facility. Have usage to that because even if they had Thursday to Sunday, that only leaves three days for the high school, which is what we currently use in summer training right now. And if you can only have evening time with heat restriction for L H U S D students, then other organizations would follow that.
Well, the, the calendar proposal, as, I mean, this is a typical contract drafted by legal. This allows for those conversations to be had. So that way they don't get the advantage and then others get the disadvantage. So this allows them and the district to sit down, look at a calendar and schedule ahead of time their, their proposed usage of that field.
Yeah, so for example, when the Twymans come back, we would typically sit down August, early August and, and hammer out the schedule of what days we want to do. Like I said, we're only looking to play, you know, thirty to thirty-five games. But if we're playing double headers, that's not only fifteen to twenty days during the summer. So it's not every day, we're not doing that. It's, you know, you're looking, you know, we're going to play sixty-five game season in the summer. And typically we have thirty to thirty-five home games, which really equates to anywhere from fifteen to twenty scheduled days that we're in the facility. Not every team that's going to travel here wants to play double headers. You know, we have teams that come down from Washington, California, you know, all over the West Coast. And, you know, we even have teams that might fly in from the Midwest to come play us. So we also travel to San Diego. We travel along the West Coast as well to play games, so.
I have one other question then because just I had an outside organization be approved to use the facility also. So I'm curious, does the bomber organization, do we get this in contracts? Or does other outside entities that request times? I'm just curious, but this is the only one that came to the board.
Well, like I mentioned just earlier today, we're now opening up facilities. We do have our facilities use manual before our legal counsel at the moment. We're looking to streamline that to where there is no picking of winners and losers as to who pays the tier-one rate or the tier-two rate or the tier-three rate. Right now, it's, it's kind of, it's not very clear as to the distinctions between tier-two and tier-three. We're looking to make sure that, that we simplify that. You'll recall that the bombers are not paying fees at this particular time because we are working on that process of trying to make sure that our facilities use agreement promotes the educational mission of the district. And if that happens, that's the legal language and statute. If that happens, then that allows us greater flexibility to allow groups to come in and enjoy our facilities if it's promoting that enhancement to the district, what our, what our mission is for our kids. So that's where we're trying to get to. I'm, my hope is to get that facilities manual updated and ready to go before the board in September so that we now have a very clear pathway forward in, in making our facilities open for those who wish to use them. Always giving the district first priority.
Yeah, and this, you know, our staff are all college coaches. So last year or this year, there was typically three that got scholarships out of the baseball program. Two of them came through us. Previous year, we had twelve that came through us out of the, out of the program. And like I said, every year we have, you know, anywhere from two to ten kids that we, we help get scholarships to go, go on to the next level. That's kind of what we do. You know, most of the, the other high school coaches in Arizona on the baseball side have all played for us. They're all Havasu Heat alumni. They're from here, they come here and they stay. We have currently sixty-five of our alumni that played professional baseball that now live here in town. They came here as college students to play baseball. They finished their career and moved here. So they are currently living in town here. You know, the newspapers had, Bob Malak, he just got, went up. He played for us for three years. So, you know, most of these players are from our local area. We have a lot of guys that come through our program.
Mr. Murray, just to come back to what you said about the facility use man, or manual, just because that's being updated, that doesn't mean that, for instance, we have a request from the orchestra group to reserve a space. They don't, we don't have to wait until September for that manual. They can still.
No, we can, we can currently schedule and, and accept those who are wanting to use our facilities now. It's just strictly for just ease of scheduling and not having people come to the board or to the, the business department or superintendent saying, why, why was I charged this rate when I was supposed to be charged this rate? Or we have, we have everyone that calls us and says that they're with the city. We've had multiple meetings with the city and they say that's not true. They're not, they're throwing our name around hoping to get on, into our facilities through our I G A with the city. So we just, we just want to make sure that we simplify things, we clarify things and that we make it just easy and accessible for those who want to use our facilities. But that's, that's just a document though to make that happen.
Okay, gotcha. So the, over the past night and then today, I heard from some community members and some staff members. And there were kind of five main concerns that kept popping up. And some of them have been addressed, but I'm going to go ahead and read them anyway. One of them is specifically protecting the turf against damage because that turf is specialized and expensive. And so for instance, I heard that the softball and baseball teams use special cleats. And so I was wondering if there's going to be the same restriction.
So currently our facilities that we play on in Kansas are turf. Ninety percent of the fields we play on are turf. So we're very familiar with that. We don't wear, typically wear spikes. We, you know, there's, of all the facilities we play in, there's probably eighty percent that don't allow spikes. So our, our players are very familiar with the turf shoes or the athletic style shoes. And so that's not a huge concern on our part with our players because they're already used to doing that. That's something we currently do.
And our visiting teams now typically, I mean, Carrie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. They typically don't wear specialized shoes for our turf. Our visiting teams coming in from Phoenix, if they have them, we, we request that they use them, but we can't mandate that they wear the specialized cleats and not wear spikes because most kids just can't afford that, to have two pairs of cleats.
We are fully molded or plastic. And we always have a heat map down in the facility to destroy the weather. And I always have the purchase prior to the, the, we are turfed. The dirt should probably be twisted and made those people in. But some on the day do turn it. My question is how to, um, ensure percentage of this.
But your, your players and, and those who compete in your league, they are familiar with our official turf and the, and the proper attire and equipment to use.
In the, in the area we play in, we only have two natural fields. And we have one, that's a combination, that's a turf infield, a grass outfield. So all of our players are used to playing on turf. Like I said, we play on turf. That's typical back there, you know, like yesterday we got nine inches of rain in about four hours and we played that evening. So that's why they use the turf fields because they drain. So like I said, it's not, that's not an issue with us at all.
So to address your specific question though, that you received, it does say in section two I that the Heat will be responsible for the payment of any and all damages to the buildings, furnishings, fixtures, equipment, et cetera, caused by its usage of the, usage of the facilities. These items may include, but are not limited to, press box equipment. And it gives a list of, of things there. So they, they are responsible for damage. Now, wear and tear is something then different than damage. If they're damaging something, then yes, if they're damaging our turf field, they would be responsible for repairing that turf field.
And I would, I mean, I, I see your point that the et cetera would kind of cover turf, but I would like turf specifically put in there.
There we could do it.
Just for clarity's sake.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
No issue?
And just speaking with that, like with the wear and tear in the turf, is that something we could write in as far as the spikes, you know, right in that everyone's going to use?
The only issue you might have is not necessarily with our club, but if we have clubs that come out of different locations, you know, like up in the Washington area, this, they don't use turf fields as much, they're more natural surfaces. California typically has more natural surfaces. So that would be the only issue. But again, like, it's no different than what the high school does now with other schools coming in. You know, they're going to play a one or two games, you know, in spikes. It's, it's designed to do that. I mean, the turf is designed to use spikes. We choose to use turfs just to help maintain it and for safety reasons really.
Could we do something similar where we just kind of require the Heat to do it and then ask the other teams to do it the same way we do there?
So our league currently, what they do is they will send out a list of fields that are turf and if there are specific requirements, you know, for certain facility usage. So currently, like in our league back in Kansas, there's three fields that are molded or turf only. The only issue they have with that, it's not necessarily with the Heat, but other teams come in as they bring limited rosters because some of these guys, you know, these are college kids. They don't have really any money. So, you know, they're, they're playing on a two-string budget just like we are. But yeah, I don't have an issue. We, we usually notify them. So that's just something what we do in our league. We send out a mass email and phone calls and say, hey, we prefer you to wear turfs. Most of the kids have them. Most of the kids have them. But we can't guarantee that they show up to a game and they don't have cleats on.
But you'll communicate that and strongly encourage that if they do, that they wear those, just like we do. And we can't, we're not gonna turn away a bus from the valley because half the players don't have the recommended shoes, but we can strongly encourage them to bring them and to wear them.
Yeah, that's not an issue for us at all.
Another thing on the issue with the wear and tear, I know it's, you know, we kind of feel like it's our baby because it passed in the bond. I know softball and baseball, it's no gum, no seeds.
Yeah, currently, we don't allow any turf facilities that we play on, they don't allow seeds, gum, anything like that in the fields. So, our guys, we don't even allow them in the stadium, to be honest with you. So, where we currently play, they don't, we don't sell sunflower seeds, we don't allow them in the facility at all because if they're spitting them in the stands, they're gonna blow on the field. Like I said, this year, helping with softball, we had a couple of teams that came in and we actually stopped the coach and made the girls go pick the seeds up out of the turf. We would do the same thing, so.
Is that it on wear and tear for now?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, so another area that kind of kept coming up was just the access, and I think it's a little bit of a sore spot maybe that we would be potentially giving access to a third party when it's sometimes difficult for our coaches to get access to the field. And so, and I'm thinking, I'm speaking specifically about keys. And Mr., just so everyone knows, I emailed these questions to Mr. Murray and he has provided the response. So, I do know the answers to these questions, I just want them to be a matter of public record. So, can you address the issue of access?
Sure. So, I spoke to our maintenance supervisor. We don't always have a district representative present every time we let someone from the outside use our facilities. That doesn't always happen. Now, I can see your point when it comes to the pack. Obviously, we need someone there to run the control booth, to turn up the volume and set things up, so we do have a district representative there. In regards to keys, our maintenance department can re, can key the specific locks that are needed, and it's pointed out here in the agreement of the areas in which you are going to be permitted access should this be approved, including a storage area. And that would be one area, and I know that you've walked with myself and administration at the high school to just kind of look at things, and that was already discussed and determined that that would be included in this agreement. So, a key to the gate, a key to concessions, restrooms, as outlined here in the agreement, and a key to that particular area of storage just during your summertime, that you're there on-site, not for a twelve-month period, but just during that time in which you're using the facilities, that would be accessible to you via a key. That way, they can't get into Carrie's equipment over there in the softball area or disturb our baseball coaches, our baseball district employees' things. So, we will have a very specific area or areas in which you will be able to access per the agreement.
Yeah, so currently, we have our own storage facility to store our major stuff. So, what we're talking about is one of the storage closet to be able to store baseballs and water jugs and stuff like that for the games so we're not having to haul in, you know, fifteen dozen balls every game. We will go through dozens and dozens of balls in a game, unlike the high school. We're not allowed to reuse them. Once they get out, they, once they get head out, we have to put new ones in, that's part of our rules. So, yeah, with our areas, we don't need anything other than, we'd like to be able to use the batting cages, the field itself, the parking areas, and the one storage area that we were talking about. The softball field, we don't, we're not gonna use it, I'm not gonna be playing softball on it with college-level guys, so. But that was just outlined because that's where the fence is and that's where we wanna house the people, keep them in that area.
So, when it comes to, you mentioned softball, so when it comes to the batting cages, there's four of them there. Do you anticipate using just two? Because I think we have it set up to where it's kind of two-and-two-ish. So, should softball want to come in and do something, you know, while the heater there? I mean, could they have access to two of their batting cages?
I don't see that being an issue. The only issue that might be is because of the gate issue, and, you know, we have to charge gate, you know, to come in there. And, you know, as long as we understand or we know that they're gonna be coming in there and we can let our people know that, hey, we're gonna have some people coming in, I don't believe that to be an issue. The only issue you might run into is during those games, you're gonna have parking issues. We tend to, you know, currently in Kansas, we can have anywhere from a thousand to five thousand people at a game. So, right now, we're averaging around eighteen hundred people a game. And that's in a town of twenty thousand people. So, you know, the heat was very big here before we went back to Kansas, and so I would imagine we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the community and people are excited that we're wanting to come back here. So, I would imagine we're gonna have pretty decent turnouts at our games. There's a lot of long-term Heat fans that still live here that follow us in Kansas. We have people that fly out to Kansas just to come watch games.
The next item on my list, and actually, this one should have been the first one, but first priority is given to LHUSD students. That was the one thing that definitely kept popping up as a theme. I think that could be addressed and has been addressed somewhat here tonight, but I would like to see language that specifically says that, first of all, our students have top priority, and I would like the coaches of baseball and softball to be involved in the calendar process, which I think you've already mentioned.
Yeah, and that'll be, I reference LHHS administration, so if that comes as a directive from the superintendent via the board, we can make that definitely mandatory. During this whole time, though, administration at the high school's been involved in this whole entire process, so. Now, when you say just priority to district students, though, we do need to make sure that, we have to have a calendar for a reason, so that way they can schedule their season. But I think anything beyond that would be district priority. It would be our coaches and the kids that would have priority at that point.
Yes. We would still be acting in good faith, we wouldn't be saying, oh, you have a game.
Yeah, the only issue we want to make sure we don't run into is, we have a scheduled game and all of a sudden, something else pops up and we can't have the field because it's gonna cost not only us, but like I said, it's, it costs us typically right now to travel to a game about twenty-five thousand dollars if we're traveling out of town. So, with other teams coming here, it's the same thing. So, we do not want to, you know, put that burden on those other teams, say, oh, they're here, and all of a sudden, you know, they want to have a practice during our schedule, that's gonna be an issue. So, we try to avoid that, and I don't think there'll be any issue with that as long as we're communicating and, you know, we have our schedule set. Like I said, we're starting our talks right now to start scheduling stuff so we can see when our other teams want to come in and play us, so we can sit down with the school district and iron that schedule out.
Typically, about what month would be you be doing that with ironing it out and having your set schedule?
We typically would start that in August, so by the end of August, we would have a good idea of the set schedule. At least days that we're gonna use it, not necessarily what teams will be here, but what days we're looking at to schedule games.
And that would be for next summer?
That would be for next summer, yes.
That would give a lot of time for negotiations and discussions with.
And I do feel, if the contract really did specify more specific times, that's what I'm talking about tonight, it makes it a lot easier for some of our outside organizations to come in and travel, or determine if we're scheduled on seven days a week, which are the days, but our heavy days are in the fall. So, if we could guarantee usage in September, October, November, December, for Lake House and High School age students to compete and schedule in the facility, that would make it a lot easier. That's why I just have a really hard time with rendering of the contract because it's not clear as to when they want to use the facility or when we would be able to, plus other entities which are at high school students wanting to compete.
Now, we do, the heat currently, we do field days for local kids and, you know, stuff like that on some days. We also do that in the off-season, like I said, but we would set those dates ahead of time at the beginning of the year. So, we schedule our stuff a year out ahead of time. So, you know, if we're gonna do like celebrity softball tournament, something like that where we have local people here playing with, you know, professional players, you know, we would schedule that and put that on the calendar as well. We do host golf tournaments, we do lots of events all over the community. So, I mean, if we'd have the ability to bring college coaches in there to do showcases, we have companies that do that, that's not part of this. We didn't put that in there because that's not something we wanted to focus on right now, but if that's the, if the school district wishes us to help with that, we are willing to do that as well.
But currently, in the contract with us, it says that those events are completely scheduled, and that's the part that I have a hard time with not knowing when access for Lake House to unify would be available.
Like I said, for us, we're looking, we're gonna be using the fields, you know, over the two months, probably around twenty, twenty to twenty-five days throughout the whole calendar year. So, you know, in a twelve-month period, that's a very small amount.
Yeah, this sounds like something that can be worked out.
Right, and just to point out, in section D, number one, it, this, we are requiring that this yearly calendar is scheduled from the heat and the school perspective by the third week of August for the following year. So, there's a whole year of timeframe before this even begins for the first year, and then years after that, should we continue with the contract, it would be a whole year in advance before, so other entities, community members, teams could then, all of the months that you were talking about certainly should be available. But the whole idea is that this calendar is developed with them an entire year in advance, by the third week of August.
So, you're not coming, if you, if you, this is accepted and approved, you're not starting until next summer?
Twenty-two, yep.
So, we will sit down in August, this coming August. So, that means from now all the way through until whenever we sit down in August and determine what dates are there and available and that you're requesting, meeting with the team. So, from now until possibly next May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, there's no heat usage at all. And then in August, here in just a few short months, we'll know what those dates are, and then we'll know at that point in August what our fall is even gonna look like in winter of the following year before they even come back two years from now. So, there's plenty of time, and the contract's written in that way to give everyone advanced notice without telling them you have to live in this area because if you say you're gonna be out by August thirtieth or July thirtieth, but you have to schedule a game on the thirty-first for a pickup game or whatever it may be, there's some flexibility there ahead of time to allow everyone to get their calendars coordinated.
So, you have to also realize that that takes us typically about ten months to recruit a team, get them here, because we also have rules that we have to follow with the NCAA. They have a schedule, we have to play in the summertime, we can't have guys playing in the wintertime that are college-level players, it's a violation, they'll lose their scholarship. So, you know, we have a set window that we play in, which is, you know, basically June, July. Into August, we don't like to typically play into August because it's too hot, you know, one, and it, a lot of the guys come back, they start school, you know, college that first couple of weeks of August, so we have to give them time to get their stuff and get to wherever they need to be. So, that's kind of what, we have a window as well outside of what this discussion is here that we have to work in. Like currently, we have our roster is about forty-five guys, and it takes us about nine months to recruit forty-five guys and get them organized, get them situated, get families for them to live in, you know, here in the community. All of our players stay with local families, host families, so, you know, like I said, we integrate all of our players into the community. They don't just hang out in a hotel room and get in trouble down at Lake. They are part of the community, they, that's why so many of them return back here.
Okay. The next thing on the list, and I believe this already has been addressed sufficiently, but the provision of a district employee at heat events to ensure and enforce rule compliance, it sounds like that would be delegated to the maintenance supervisor to inspect, not necessarily to be present during the entire event, but to inspect afterwards.
Correct. After each time they, each weekend that they use the facility. So, not at the end of the two-month period or three-month period, but after the four-game Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday event. And we will have maintenance people on staff and working Thursdays and Fridays typically most, they're year around two-hundred-and-sixty-one-day employees. So, we would have people who are there at the site the following day, just with the exception of weekends.
So, currently, with the facility we play in is owned by the city, and the high school team also uses that facility in our, in Wellington where we're at right now. So, if there's any damage or issues or anything like that, when we show up to the field, we typically will walk it and make sure there's any, if there's anything, we will note it and we either send an email or take pictures and send it to the maintenance guy so they know, hey, there was graffiti or there was, you know, locks that were broken. If we find anything like that, we will typically notify the school district, so that won't change either. That's something we normally do. Currently, we have clubhouse, we won't be having clubhouse here, so that's not an issue where we are currently, we have clubhouse, and with the whole COVID thing, they're not even allow us to use the clubhouse. So, our guys are basically given their uniforms and change at home and then show up to the field, so, which is basically what we're gonna be doing here as well.
And then my final thing, and I know we all know more about baseball than we did at the beginning of this meeting, but, so, some of the LHUSD equipment that we have was actually donated by the Booster Club or other parent groups, and so I heard from people that they were concerned that, you know, that those donations were, of equipment were made specifically for student use, but they are now, because they were donated to the school and the district, they are now considered LHUSD property. So, there was some concern that that equipment, you know, that there would be some sensitivity to the fact that we want to use that donated equipment for its intended purpose, if it was meant for student use only, that we be respectful of that.
So, currently, we have all of our own equipment. We actually will be moving all of our stuff back. We have a storage facility that we keep our stuff, so screens and, we don't use pitching machines, but balls, all that type of stuff, we would bring down and store in the storage area that they would give us, or let us use during the season, and once that's over, we would remove it and put it back in our own storage area. But we have our own screens, so there's really no equipment other than the field itself. Even bases, we have our own bases that we use. If the school doesn't want us to remove them and put them in, that's fine, too. If they do, we can do that as well, it doesn't really matter. So, announce, you know, like the PA systems, we have our own PA system, so we are used to setting those up and using them, you know, if we're gonna use the school districts or if they don't want us, that's fine, too, it doesn't really matter. We have our own facility, our own equipment to operate. So, there's very little we would actually be using of the school district's stuff. The only thing we would want to use is obviously the batting cages, and we have our own screens, we have our own balls, we have everything like that. So, there's not much that we would have to use that is owned by the school district.
So, Carrie, maybe you can clarify with the Booster Club question that Ms. Ramon just asked, are most of those items, would they be locked up in your, or a closet somewhere or a shed?
The facility, a large amount of our screens is the one we're looking to give access to, so that, where it could be locked, they're currently at this door that opens in cases, which means they have access to Lake House. And we, and we're using it, we can't take them, like, up to the gym or anything because we're gonna do those also, ensuring everyone has access.
But if they're in your bullpen, they're not permitted in the softball area anyways, unless they're retrieving a foul ball or something like that, but.
Yeah, but just to kind of wear baseball costumes, they're next to me.
Yeah, so the storage unit we were talking about that we. Yeah, so the, the storage unit we were talking about that we talked about was the storage unit on the. The third base side, it's just a smaller closet there. Otherwise, we don't have any use to, you know, any other buildings except for the, you know, obviously the snack bar and the restrooms, but. Anything else, we don't really need access to, you know, just the ability to get balls and and stuff like that, so like we would probably, and it, it's not like we let the. We're not gonna send kids over to get balls out of the softball field, our players go get the balls, you know. The only balls the kids typically will get are the ones that go over the fence and they're out in the street, so, you know, kids like to run and get those, but. You know, and I've also talked with the city about putting signs up there along the road to say, hey. Watch out for foul balls, I, I'm a city employee, I've worked for the city for twenty years. So I've already had those discussions with them, they don't have an issue doing that as well.
Well, I'm out of questions, um, I did want to say just in general that I um. I'm supportive of renting facilities out because I think that um, for one thing, it, it kind of promotes hometown pride, especially with something like a ball field. Um, and it, I feel like it kind of makes our schools good neighbors, so I, I like that aspect of it. I do want to protect our district's best interests and make sure, you know, we, we have a very nice field, we want to keep our nice things. As nice as possible for as long as possible, um, so with that said, I. I could vote to approve this contract today, my preference would be to wait until we have a finalized contract with some of these additional. Language items put in, like specifically the turf. I would, my preference would be to wait to delay voting on this until um, we are having a special session next week on Wednesday. And so if the other board members wanted to do that, we could just tack that onto that agenda and vote then. Otherwise, I could vote on this today, I, I could go either way.
So is turf really the only additional?
Turf, and then um. I would add in language that clarifies, because it is a two-year contract, I can see the confusion. That that would encompass the entire. Seven-hundred-and-twenty days, um, I think that there might be some language in there that just specifies that this is just for the summer months.
And that's fine, like that's right now, that's what we're, our goal is, you know, right now, we have basically six weeks before we. Are planning on leaving Kansas and moving back here, um, so, you know. We can't really put anything out in the public until we have all the paperwork done, so, you know.
And does it present a hardship if it's delayed by eight days?
Not eight days, no, I mean, if it was next week, that shouldn't be an issue whatsoever, so if it's gonna drag out months, yeah, that's. Like I said, our, our, our goal is to been, come back here the last few years, our contract expired last year. With COVID, we didn't, weren't able to play, they shut everything down, so we. Could have stayed, we could have came and played this year if we wanted to, but we didn't want to rush it and try to force it, force it, so we. Decided we would, our first season back here will be the summer of twenty-two.
A lot of people saw this contract or this agreement um just recently, and so that. Might be an additional benefit to waiting until next week is that um, more people will be able to see it and weigh in in case there's something else that we overlooked.
That, I mean, that would be up to the high school admin at that time, for this purpose, it would be. In August, it would be for the heat to sit down with the heat to look at the calendar and their needs for their summer program.
I do see your point, but I think there is a little bit of kind of first come, first serve as well, like.
I think beginning time should be guaranteed, and I think that to meet their schedule, that needs to happen. But the practice days.
Like I said, we don't, currently right now, we don't really have practice days, you know, we play seven days a week. So our guys are playing all the time, it'll, it's a little different out here, but. When we come here and we're playing four days a week, the, the reason for that is to give those players the opportunity to enjoy. Lake Havasu on the other three days a week, so we don't typically practice those days. Yeah, so we play a sixty to sixty-five game schedule, we're gonna play thirty home games of a majority, those are double headers, so, you know. One day is actually eating up. Two games, so if we're playing thirty home games, we could play anywhere from fifteen days to twenty days. Yeah, so currently, we play um, our current schedule this year, we play a week, week and a half at home and then we're on the road for a week. We don't go on a road for one day, if we're going on a road, we're going for a week, it's cost too much money to travel. And take forty-five guys, tour buses, the whole thing to do that, so we rent them by the week, we don't rent them by the day.
So for an example, I'm looking at the twenty-twenty-two calendar, June first, second, third and fourth is a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So by our meeting time in August, you would be able to identify home games and away games, so that way. It would be open at that point, so you, you might have, you might request first, second, third and fourth as a home game using our facility. But then you may be on the road the week of the sixth.
That's correct.
So the facility would be completely wide open, the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth.
And I think that's, that, again with that, if. If there's another event that they want, a tournament that, that's a certain weekend, as long as we know that, we, and in August, we have the ability to schedule around that. But we have to be able to play, you know, for the community and the. The sponsors and the people that help us put it on, we have to be able to play thirty home games. You know, because the community is really what supports us and that's allows us to then to go ahead and put money back into the community. So we have to be able to play around thirty home games, which is. Ten to ten, or fifteen to twenty calendar days.
So it's really no different than.
It's the baseball season.
Then, than those who are looking to use the pack during the year, you have your annual calendar or you're looking to have certain. Um, performances, uh, you know, certain days within each month and, and the year. So you're looking at a calendar, an annual calendar, just like you would be looking at the annual calendar, presenting those requests. And then they would either be scheduled or, or not scheduled, in your case, you would have a schedule of home games and away games. All the other non-scheduled days would be open to the public to then say, I, I want to take these days.
Well, even, you know, with the turf facility, even on days that we play, if we're only gonna be there from, say, you know, four o'clock or three o'clock till. The evening, if you, they, you know, we don't have. Any problem with them using it in the morning or anything like that, so it's not like we have to wait and have them. Maintain the field and chop the field and all that stuff, it's, it's turf, you just show up and play on it, so that's. That's really not a huge issue for us, if, if you want to have practice in the morning or anything like that, it, it's. Like I said, it's, it's around twenty calendar days of the year that we're using the facility.
And that's just the baseball field, so softball field is wide open, they're not touching it at all for the entire twelve-month period.
And the only reason that, that was outlined in that is just because that's where the current fences are and we don't want to have to. Put fences up to block it off, but those facilities too, they have locks on them, they can be locked to restrict access, we don't. Personally, we don't want the liability having a bunch of kids running around on softball field. Right, swinging bats, doing stuff, because when we're operating it, it, we have insurance that we have to cover to cover that, so. There are some stuff that we don't allow as well, um, so we would restrict that. And that's why we have our own security that stands there and makes sure and we don't let the kids, because we don't want. One, I don't want fans going into the school and walking up into the other facilities, so we have security guards at any gate that's open. And that restrict that, so, you know, foul ball, stuff like that, we have players that go. Shag those balls back and bring them back.
So Carrie, with um, just your knowledge of, of the facility use and what the community might want. What are kind of like the big maybe overlap parts?
Yeah, we typically, yeah, we're not gonna add events, um, once we set our schedule, it's set. You know, because once it's published, we have to publish it in, in our books and it goes across the country of what the game schedules are. Yeah, so. Like I said, uh, once we set our schedule, our schedule's set.
It, it sounds to me that everybody wants this to happen and we can make it happen, and I think just. It's just wanting the, getting the language is, just being set. To something that's a little bit more comfortable and everybody is saying that, yeah, we can do it, so.
Well, maybe that's, I mean, maybe the best way to go about that is, like you said, have a, a annual meeting on. You know, first, second week of August that everyone can sit down and. Say, okay, I need this date, that, like I said, we're not saying, hey, we need it every day, that's not what we're trying to do. Once we set our schedule, then our schedule's locked, that's the only issue we would have, once we set our schedule, it's locked. We're not gonna typically get rainouts here, so I don't think that's going to be an issue, um, but.
We hope it's an issue.
We're not, I mean, so where we are in Kansas, we get rainouts, so we have days that we have openings and if. We don't have an opening in our facility, we go play at another facility, we don't really have that here because there's no other facilities in the area that allow us to do that, so. You know, there might be some days that we would leave scheduled, but leave without a game open, just so in case we need to reschedule or, you know. Something happens, we would have the availability to do that, but we're not gonna be scheduling sixty days of use in the summertime. I personally don't want to stand out in the heat sixty days in the summertime, so. So.
We would just need to be able, I would just like the ability for LHUSD staff to be sitting down with us.
And that's not an issue for us at all.
So in, in kind of thinking, I kind of feel like a, a board member, Ramon. That we're just so close, we just need to be a little bit more careful and if we have the week to do it, maybe we can do that. And just make sure we dot all our Is and cross our Ts, the hard part for me is there's just been so much discussion that I don't know what all the Is and Ts are at this stage. But I know you guys know it.
I know the one discussion was to add turf, so that is clearly specified in the contract, the other. Thing that I keep hearing is the coaches want to be involved in that scheduling conversation when it happens um in August, so everybody knows what's going on. I, that is something that the, the administration and the athletic director would certainly, I would assume, involve their coaches. To make sure they knew what everybody's schedule is and who all might need access, so then you can then develop through schedule, as I know that's a. It can't be a shot in the dark, you have to know what it is, you can publish it. Other than that, did you hear specifics to add?
Are those the specifics that you were looking for, Carrie?
I just think really blocking out the time so that it's easier for our other outside organizations to plan and organize around it too. We will keep it easy, May fifteenth to September first. And others could organize, because it does take time to bring in tournaments and organize other things for other groups to be that.
Yeah, so for us, we don't typically, like, if we were, our first game this year was the thirty-first of May. Most of our players got out of school, they reported two days before we started playing, so they showed up May thirty-first, we played the first game May thirty-first, our last game this will be. July twenty-eighth, because the kids have to report back to school, especially the kids that are playing baseball, they don't report at the same time as. And, you know, it depends on California, most of our players come out of California, they don't have the same schedule as like the NCAA do, it's a different schedule. So they're a little bit behind, so, you know, like, for instance, half of our players, they showed up a week, two weeks late because they were. The schools didn't let out, so.
Did what Dr. Stone proposed address your concerns?
Yeah, it should be fine, I don't see any issue with that.
So could we put contest dates will typically occur between May fifteenth and September first, something along that?
As long as there's no issue with us holding other events, you know, like I said, but that would be something we would want to schedule. Like I said, we have the ability to do showcases, we have companies that do that, but that would be, to me, that would be no different than us coming in and. Doing a request form like everyone else is doing.
Correct. Correct, but then when that's set, or whenever the calendar is established, if. The heat comes in and says, hey, we really would like that date in November, or whatever it may be, or March. And it's an open date on the calendar, then they would have access to that date, just as if. The local community group, you know, they, the, the winds want to come in and they say, hey, that date's available, we would like to. We don't see anything else that the high school's doing, the high school signs off on it, yep, we don't have anything scheduled that day, then they would have. Access to request that particular day, so it would be just as if any other member of the community requests us, requests to use a facility on that specific day.
About how many outside of the summer would you actually do, two, three, four?
Yeah, we usually would, you know, we'll usually do a celebrity softball game or, you know, we'll do like a. You know, just showcases, like, we usually, we typically do a Christmas camp, so during Christmas break, we'll bring our players in, we'll have a Christmas camp for. The local youth, you know, little league guys to come in and basically learn and play with the, the pro guys. And that's just something we do and we offer that to the community and we usually partner up with, you know, Parks and Rec or School District or whomever would want to be involved, it's not just. We're doing it, we partner up with the different groups in the community to put that stuff on.
Is there any way to get this language into it now or is it something we should do in a week?
Either way, but, so let me just, just so I know, if, if I'm coming back to you in a week, that I'm coming back with the right language.
Yeah, yeah.
So in section one D where it says scheduled contest. That, that paragraph says this schedule, right at the end, last sentence, this schedule will include scheduled contest dates. We could add between May fifteenth and September first. Field use times and event names. And then that would, that would put the date range in the contract. And then should you request additional days somewhere else in the calendar?
Then it would go through the normal process, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Is it available on that date, we would like always check with the high school, what's your calendar, we, we'd yield to the high school all the time with PAC usage. What's on your calendar and they tell us that if it's clear, then we proceed at the district side to schedule the event. So we would do the exact same with you.
So like I said, spring, a lot of our players are playing ball in spring, so we can't play anyway, so the months we play in are the summer months. Winter time is not really an option because most of the kids are in school and the. Wintertime is not really an option, because most of the kids are in school, and the AIA and the college level, not AIA, but the NCAA and all the other schools don't allow them to play league-type ball while they're in class. It has to be in the summertime.
So then one more clarification. So in Section 2I, yep, 2I, it says, "The Havasu Heat shall be responsible for the payment of any and all damages to the buildings, furnishings, fixtures, equipment, et cetera, caused by its usage of the facilities." Now here's where we would add, "These items may include, but are not limited to, turf, press box equipment, speakers, air conditioners, et cetera." Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it's fine.
And then as far as including staff members on the calendaring part of it, that wouldn't need to be in a contract between us and them, it doesn't involve them, it's just an agreement that we're making to our staff.
That's an internal, yeah, internal thing. I personally think that we'd, it'd probably be kind of silly not to, when it comes to scheduling, and like I said, we do that now. Every time we have a request, we yield to the school site.
I mean
Final comments to thank the governing board for looking at the issues, because I know it was short notice, and I know I probably just found out the information late, but I appreciate you really looking into it, I appreciate the district administration for willing to look at contractual changes, and for the Heat really
Like I said, you know
Being able to do that, I mean, I think this is a conversation that would have been official prior to this meeting, but I'm glad that it was done.
Yeah, and like I said, the Heat was started here, we started here in 2000, oh, sheesh, it was like '92, I think, because when, the first year, it's 20, our 29th year, right? Time flies. But this is our 29th year, and we played here and won three world championships out of here, playing on the high school field. We're literally 11 games away from 1,000 wins, so in the next probably two weeks, we'll have that, which is a big accomplishment for a lot of players, most teams don't even have that. But we all live here, all of our coaching staff were from here, I've been here since '84, I grew up here, graduated from here, so, we take just as much pride in the facilities as anybody else, because I played on the old field too, so, I coached on the old field, that we know how bad it was. So we're excited too. And when the school district decided to pass the bond and do that, that's when we kind of threw it around, maybe it was time for us to come home. And we've talked to the school district, we've talked to the city, we've talked to a lot of people in town, and they are all very supportive, and I'm glad that we're able to have these discussions and iron these few things out, so, you know, our goal is to come home. You know, it's hard to run a business that's 2,000 miles away, it's difficult, you know, we, to pick up and move everything back there and come back, for me, I'm here right now, I'll probably be leaving in two weeks, and I'll be gone from my family for a month. So, it's tough to do it, and trust me, we'd rather be here doing it anyways, it's more fun.
I'd also like to say I appreciate both of you coming in here and, you know, continuing this conversation. It's hard to be on the hot seat.
For an hour and a half.
I've been doing it a long time, like I said, I've been with the city for 20 years, so trust me, I'm the asset administrator, so I get hammered all the time. But, like I said, I personally have worked with Carrie for years, and, you know, we have a pretty good relationship, and, you know, I've worked on the baseball staff for years, and I get along with all those guys, and, you know, I ran the Little League here for 10 years, I've been around a long time, so, I'm well invested in the community, just like the Twymans are, so.
Thank you, thank you for your time. I don't want to scare anyone else off from ever proposing a facility use agreement, we normally don't dig down this deep into stuff.
Well, we figured it was going to be interesting, just because it's the first time, so we expected that, and we're, you know, we're prepared to work with everybody, and, you know, our biggest goal was going this route, was making sure, because we have to schedule so far out, we have something set, so we can set our schedule. If we have to come in and apply every time we want to have a game, and it gets booted because something else comes in, it doesn't make it feasible for us to bring the team back here, and that's really our goal, is to bring the team back here. It's good for the community, it brings, you know, the state of baseball right now across the country, scouts don't come to a lot of tournaments, they go to these type of events, you know, we have scouts that will come here for weeks on end to watch kids play. And like I said, we currently have two high school students that are playing for us right now, and they're actually doing both pretty well, Kayden Twyman and Ryan Blondeau. So, we typically always have students from Havasu playing for us, that's our goal.
I do have one question, sorry. That dollar 170, I just don't know where it came from and what it's supposed to do.
It just came from our current facilities use manual, and it's simply the hourly rate times two, because it's a long-term contract, meaning multi-year, multi-days, that was the number that was provided. And as we look at other facilities use manuals, it's kind of in line with what others would charge.
That's what I thought, thanks.
So the board at this time could make a motion to approve the contract, but as amended, with the amended language, that is your option.
Is there, it has been a while ago, do we have a current motion on the floor?
No.
No, okay.
No. I will make the motion.
To approve 6.15 with the proposed
With the proposed changes, yes.
I will second that.
Additional discussion? There's no discussion, so let's go ahead and vote it.
Kyle DeGromen?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Eric Urin?
Yes.
Or Kiana Aliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
All right, I just want to say thank you, and we do look forward to the Heat, the Twyman family, and my family, to continue to work with you guys and bring this back to the community, and we're very excited to come back, and, like I said, we think it's a good benefit for all involved, the students, the community, and, you know, bring some more revenue back into the city here.
Welcome back, Heat.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Roman, excuse me, 616?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is recommended the board approve vouchers for April and May of 2021, as well as student activity funds for April, and auxiliary funds for April 2021.
I will entertain a motion on that.
I move that we approve 6.16 as stated.
I second.
Kyle DeGromen?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Eric Urin?
Yes.
Or Kiana Aliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Kay, do we have any informationals?
I would just like to share with everybody that summer school has started, and our STEM camps have started, and at all schools, it is really exciting. We went around today just to see the learning that was going on, and it was pretty awesome to see kids in every school for summer school. That is new, it used to be just one elementary school, but all of our schools are able to provide that this year, so it's awesome to see all the learning that is going on there, and our STEM camps provide another opportunity for kids to do some really cool things.
Kay, any directors? Board members?
I would like to sort of add a little bit to what Dr. Stone said about summer school. I am so impressed with the culture of summer school here. I don't know about you, but when I was growing up, summer school was viewed as, you know, kind of a punishment, and it's, it's not treated that way here, and I really appreciate that, I appreciate all the behind-the-scenes work that goes into making these programs happen. I got an email from my child's counselor, two of my children are doing summer school this year at the high school, and I got an email from their counselor, and I happened to look at the timestamp, and it was sent at 6:30 in the morning. So I think one of the things that make this district run so smoothly is all the hard work that is often unseen, but it makes it look easy, even though it's really not, it's the result of a lot of people doing a lot of extra work behind the scenes. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that, and just the positive impact that it makes.
Okay. Any other governing board members have super, have informational reports? Do we have any more calls to the public?
No, we do not.
Communications, any board suggestions for virtual agenda items? Press media have clarifying questions at all? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Eric Urin?
Yes.
Kyle DeGromen?
Yes.
Or Kiana Aliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes, we're adjourned.